...of 2020.
So move second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Onto our audience, we have Mr. Bob Mahoney from Sochere Votek. Come on up. Thank you.
Mr. Mahoney.
Good to see you again.
Good to see you.
Just have to give an update what's going on. There's a lot of great things going on down at Sochere. A lot of Rockland students are really excelling. But just to give you an idea on some of the numbers we have this year. Right now, we have 144 new students this year. Thirty-one ninth graders, sorry, thirty-one ninth graders, the room is, tenth graders have forty-seven. These are students from Rockland. Eleventh grade has thirty-five and twelve seniors, thirty-one seniors. Those are all from Rockland. The highest amount in the freshman grade is tied with Hanson is the amount of students that we have this year, which is increasingly down. By class, right now, the freshman class is 173.
Oh, good job.
The sophomores are 165. The eleventh grade is 156. And the seniors are 144. And there's a lot of great things going on. We've done a great job down at the school. The administration has as far as pushing out the co-op because of the requests from the trades. There's a large request out there. Out of all the students we have in there, we have, our total number is 638. We have 541 students from the eight sending districts and we have 97 from out of district.
Wow.
So. Co-op last year, at this time, we had 54 students out. This year here, we have, today, there are still some juniors to come, but we're up to 90 right now.
Wow.
Seventy-one of those are seniors and seventy-seven seniors and thirteen juniors are out right now on co-op.
And how does co-op work? They go, on their week of shop, they go out?
Yep. There's a week of shop, instead of going to shop, instead of going to school. They go right to their jobs and they get paid and they have a timesheet that the person has to send in. So give credit for that student, so it's not just like, you know, if there's nothing at that shop or they're closed, whatever, they come to school.
Do they have apprentice status when they go there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do they do it with landscaping, Bobby, and all of that?
Yeah, horticulture's really taken off down there right now. We're, the horticulture program is up and running now from the, we finished all the, we converted the barn out back to give them a classroom and a shop area, all in the same area. Plus, we just finished the greenhouse, which is if you have a chance, extend an invitation to anybody on the board, if you ever want to get down there for a tour and check that out. It's a great thing to see what's going on down the school that are built by the students and the students of Rockland.
Just call down there?
Yeah. Just get a call or call me.
Okay.
Make a field trip.
Dr. Crown, I think, has my number still.
Absolutely.
But yeah, more than like any time, you guys are interested, if there's any other questions I can ask of what's going on.
Yeah.
Appreciate you coming here, Bobby, I really do.
It's just giving you guys an update of where the numbers are. Dr. Hickey will be meeting with the finance committee for going over, because we set our budget and I think it's at 4.5 percent is the increase that we're looking for. But that will be going through all the districts and that gets approved by the sending towns.
4.5, you say?
Okay.
Why is it so high?
Because the thing, we don't have limited, very limited space. So the upkeep and the maintenance and the things that we're doing now, like security doors, all those. Different reasons for the additions that we're going up to on the budget. But it gets divided by the towns and we try and take it down to the cost per pupil into that. So until those numbers there are solid, because we did get a number from the state, but as Dr. Crown will probably tell you, it's, you never know till you get the money, so.
Right.
But the regional transportation budget we get that comes in, all comes in part of our transportation down there, so.
Do all your students take the bus or do you drop off? Is every, all, I would think where they're all out of different towns.
Yeah, they're all different towns. Some people just like to drive their, you know, the kids there. They, when they get through juniors and seniors, they take their own.
Right.
Vehicles. We had, Dr. Hickey did start a program where if a student was eligible to get on co-op but didn't have any transportation, how to get there, they could take the bus to school and then we would have someone from the school take them to their job. But then it's up to them to get a ride home from that job.
Okay.
Hmm, that's interesting.
But that way, it just helps. You know, sometimes they're not able to get up there.
Exactly.
Most of the jobs in the Sochere area?
Oh, yeah.
None of them go into Boston or anything like that?
Some of them, some companies like Quincy, you know, they're coming in and looking for, you know.
Health.
Yeah. You know, the computer kids are out there, the engineers, the carpenters, they're all out there doing things there, mechanics. It's a great opportunity for people in the community to get, and we appreciate those people. They're part of our advisory boards that come in and let us know what's going on with the industry and what needs to be done in the industry with the kids. So they're not learning something that they're not going to be used or outdated, so to speak.
Right. I think the market is doing well and so I think the trades are busy, you know.
The trades are, the calls are coming in much right down there to the co-op person, Paul Bella, and the vocational coordinators, Keith Boyle and Bob Mel, take care of all that stuff. And they send them all over, so.
Very good.
The requests are coming in for, I know it's like two years, we have requests for people who want additions or porches and stuff.
Right.
I just know my son's a glazer and he eats seven days a week. They are so busy all over the place, yeah.
It's a great opportunity for the kids there, so. You know, we've lowered the numbers of acceptance, but the out of district really, the numbers really helped us a lot with that.
Great.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I didn't shock you this year, Dr. Crown, with numbers, so.
Excellent, appreciate it. We didn't shock you either.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming. The trades are booming from what I've been hearing.
Have you ever tried to get a plumber or electrician in town lately?
Right.
Maybe. I have friends that are months.
Right, right.
Not any big carpentry or construction work.
I'm going to go on to the superintendent's report with Dr. Crown.
Excellent. I think I had mentioned that the Jefferson School has been awarded by the Department of Education yet again this year, the School of Recognition Award. And this year, it's going to be given, I just found out today, it's going to be given in Worcester on a Monday night, May 11th, which is a school committee meeting night. So it's somewhere down the road, we may want to discuss possibly moving that committee meeting to a different date so that those of us who want to attend can attend. It's in Worcester this year, which is, I don't know why they moved it out there, but.
Especially since it was so nice right where it was last year.
And it was during the day, yeah. So I don't know why they did, but they did and they moved it.
Central, well.
Yeah, probably central for the state, so it's more fair for everyone. But that will be on May 11th.
Okay.
And again, very excited for the Jefferson School and for Ms. Scheifli and all of their hard work. It's nice to be recognized. The next thing on my list, on Friday, Beth Bond, our middle school principal, informed me that after careful consideration and much thought, she's decided to retire as principal of Rogers Middle School effective in August. I'm personally and professionally saddened that Beth is leaving us. She's one of the most committed and talented school leaders with whom I've had the pleasure to work. You only need to see Beth interact with a student one time to see what she's all about and she's all about students. And they and all of us will greatly miss her humor, her candor, and her enthusiasm for students. But she's not leaving us until August and we have a lot of work to do between now and then. So moving forward, we'll be forming and posting, posting for the position, forming a search committee, holding interviews, then site visits for finalists. The plan is to have the new Rogers Middle School principal announced by mid to late March. So we'd like to get out in front of this. I just sent moments ago an email to the middle school faculty telling them that so that they know there's a timeline and a plan in place. As I'm sure that it's just, there are probably questions about how the whole process is going to go forward. So we'd like to take advantage of the early notice so that we can get our pick of the candidates and get the best possible person for the job. So personally, I'm very sad about it. Beth, again, is one of the finest educational leaders I've ever worked with. And no one loves students more than she does and I think she's going to be missed and very hard, it's very hard shoes to fill. And so anyway, that was some sad news from last week. But in a way, it was the outpouring of love for Ms. Bond that we've, that we've heard even since Friday has been overwhelming, so in a way, it's kind of a nice thing too for her. But as you know, Ms. Bond does not like to be in the spotlight.
And there's no emotion.
She's going to fight it all the way, but we'll do our best to thank her for her more than 30 years of service.
She's got one last Shamrock Classic.
I was going to say, Shamrock Classic will never be the same.
Maybe we'll actually let her take a fall shot or something.
Maybe she can come back every year.
She was a guest player.
Right. She can be a guest player.
Yeah.
That's on mic.
And then finally tonight, one of the things that we've, that's on my mind the minute that the vote passed for the new school was, okay, what's our plan going to be for Esten? And getting Esten ready to house all of the kindergarten and then transfer that into an early childhood center. So last week, I was able to connect with a gentleman named Matt Denninger. And Matt Denninger works for the Department of Education, but he is the liaison between the Department of Education and the MSBA. So when I've gone to MSBA meetings, I've met him a couple of times and he and I had a nice long talk. And my basic question to him was, what are the rules? What do we, what needs to be in the school for us to be able to move five more kindergarten classes and to move maybe as many as nine preschool classes in? And unfortunately, or fortunately, there really are no, there are virtually no regulations.
Even with plumbing and all of that?
I went through 125 to 30-page document. There's a section that talks about the facility. It's very broad. It leaves a lot of control up to the local building inspector. It leaves a lot of control up to the local school district. But it does not specify, for example, in every kindergarten room, there shall be a bathroom and there shall be a sink, none of that. So so far, so I was thrilled because obviously, we want this to cost as little as humanly possible. So my next step is to grab Mark Shum and Tom Ruble and take a walk through Esten and just start looking at the space and looking at the classrooms. I do anticipate needing to hire some sort of a project manager or some sort of an architect who would help us with any of the changes that we wanted to make to the preschool side. But I think that, given Mark's level of talent and skills, we really have our own project manager on staff and our own guys who can do the framing and the this and the that. So I really hope and think that we can do a lot of this work ourselves, is the hope. And so it's been so far, very good news. I'm still not relieved because, yeah.
How many classrooms are in Esten right now?
Right now, off the top of my head, I'd say 19.
Okay. And there's nine preschool classrooms?
Well, we don't know yet. As many, as much space as there is, is how many we'll put there.
Nine or 10. And then there's three kindergarten classes there?
There's three there now.
And then they were talking about moving.
But there are four rooms that are fully outfitted that like have bathrooms and sinks already in them, so.
No, I'm just saying, we have the classroom space as is.
We do.
Turnkey, push, come to shove.
Push, come to.
We're turnkey in time.
Push, come to shove, I got off the phone with him feeling like if next week we needed to move the kindergarten all into Esten, we could do it.
Right, right. Because like you said, there's no requirement for bathrooms and correct me if I'm wrong, most of our kindergarten classrooms don't have a bathroom in them.
Most of them don't. So for example, when we had all of the kindergarten in Jefferson, when we first started full-day kindergarten and we had all nine classes in one building, they, all nine kindergarten classrooms shared two bathrooms. A boys' room and a girls' room, and that was it, and they survived.
Yeah, I mean, it's the same.
We try to accommodate and move it better.
Yeah, it would be nice though. What I'd like us to be thinking is, we want to do this as inexpensively as possible. I'd love to be able to do this within the school budget as much as possible. We certainly don't want to go to the taxpayers to ask.
For sure.
For more money, but at the same time, we want this to be a 50-year, we want this to be in place for the next 50 years. So we don't want to be penny wise and pound foolish.
Well, we all have some money in the budget because of the lack of spending for maintenance in the other two schools.
Hopefully.
Right.
Throw out our dirty words, sprinklers?
Sprinklers. Well, we're in, we're in compliance now.
We are.
We are.
Even though we're changing the type.
Well, that's, that's a question that Tom Ruble will definitely have to answer. I think, you know, very, we could very well find out that if we alter the bathrooms, we have to do these 15 things.
That's what I.
That's what I'm afraid of. So anyway, I, we're slowly working our way through this process.
Sort of a checklist of each.
I'd like to have a plan in place for Esten because it's worrying me, quite honestly. I just want to make sure.
I understand. Oh, right, good.
We don't want to have to go back to the town, we just went to the town.
No, we definitely don't want to do that.
I do have a nice transition over there for the students.
We want to have a nice, smooth transition for the kids and the teachers that'll be there, absolutely.
I'd like to be in the loop on that as much as possible.
Absolutely.
Background and work.
Yeah, no, definitely, yeah. No, I'd appreciate your help on that.
Yeah, that's.
No doubt about it. That's all I have for superintendent's report.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yep.
Nothing under communications, we'll go on to reports, monthly reports for January. The administrators, Dr. Harrison, Ms. Bond, Ms. Smith, Mrs. Scheifli, Mrs. Sheehan. Guidance, Mrs. Black. The nurse, Mrs. Ryan. And pupil personnel, surface services, Dr. Menegla. I wanted to just quickly say that as quick as we approve this and we flip past, I appreciate the time and effort that they put into putting in all of these reports and the detail that these reports are in. So I just wanted to give that shout out.
Nice bocce tournament up there?
Yeah, cool, huh?
Yeah, that's, I like the bocce.
The illnesses are hit.
Well, poor high school, yeah.
The illness is.
They have fun up there?
Yeah.
What did you say?
He was unable to go.
Oh, yeah.
Student government had a great.
Had a great time, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Did you play bocce with them?
I wasn't able to go this year, but I had gone in years past. It's such a cool event because you just see like all these schools coming together and they all have like one common goal to like raise inclusion. It's a good day.
It is. Good. Thank you.
I love bocce.
Yeah, me too. Maybe we'll have a bocce tournament, it's my stuff.
Now we're taking a ride to the Votek, we're going to have bocce, okay.
We can do it right here. Right outside.
Here we go.
Four motions, please?
Four motions.
Four seconds.
All those in favor?
Enough of that.
Okay. Onto school newsletters.
Classy stuff.
For February, correct. The colors, Esten-Jefferson Memorial Park, the middle school and the high school. I agree, very cool.
I love this picture, yeah.
The girls.
The girls, yeah.
At their sweetheart, right?
Yeah, looks, and then all the information, colorful, really nice.
Right, I agree. Always, lots of, they like stack the deck. I read this and I'm fascinated with everything that's going on. Curriculum-wise, activity-wise, they're busy all day.
And they all smile.
Correct.
We still share the newsletters with, so everyone sees it.
Yeah, it's usually emailed though.
Are the newsletters on the app? On the new app?
They're, yeah, they're posted. They're posted on the, under information.
Do we have a date for the Shamrock?
Do you get notifications on the app?
I do.
Yeah, I do too. Also pops up.
I try not to anticipate the Shamrock Classic any further than I need to.
You've gotten some?
I dread this.
I got a couple.
Okay.
Well, that would be nice to be seen.
Like the dance.
Building rentals, huh?
We're out of control. Moving on.
It's your fault.
It's all of yours. You're off tonight. Building rentals for January, always super busy this time of year. Basketball, 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 so that's awesome. But they're keeping them busy. Oops, I'm making my piles wrong. Onto old business, request for approval of the field trip to Quebec City for Canada Second Reading, the store. Welcome back.
Thank you. I have with me tonight Rachael Miller, who is from Explorica. She's our local rep for Explorica Travel. And she can answer questions, I'm happy to answer questions. This will be my seventh time, I think, doing this trip, so. My old school right now, I just heard they were up there this week, so.
Oh, that's great.
So it carries on without me, however.
You're like a professional up there. Do they know you, you come through the town?
I'm like, why aren't you?
It's a city.
I haven't been up there.
You stand at the front, Mark, no?
We don't, no. We keep the budget a little lower, but we'll make it more affordable for our students. But we do stay in a pretty nice hotel, actually. Talis, Talis, Quebec.
Yeah, it's beautiful up there, at any time.
You can't go wrong, you really can.
I know, it really is gorgeous city up there, yeah. Thank you.
Do you have any questions, Tom?
I don't, yeah, no.
No. I think it's pretty straightforward. And like you've said, you've done it for many years. I just think that it's our protocol to have the rep come back to us so we can see her and make sure that we sort of have all those emergency things in place.
Has anything changed in that area at all as far as kids and how are you prepared to handle something that's tragic?
You know, with every passing year, though, we gain more experience.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, we've been doing this for over 45 years and Julie is one of our very valued teachers. And Quebec is wonderful, very safe city, given that we go to over 60 countries in the world. It's one of the safest, so.
Very good.
And you're still looking at 15 to 20 students?
Yeah, I put that in as my estimate. We always, when I travel, I wouldn't go with fewer than 14 students because at 14, I get two chaperone places. And I never want to be on my own with students in case I was called away if there was an illness or an accident or something like that. So 14 students plus two faculty would be our smallest number. But last time, I think we were close to 20. If I remember correctly. I've had as many as 35 in years past.
Get an extra person, huh?
And we, I, a lot of the students are asking, so I think we might have a good group. We're not just a good-sized group, always good kids, but a good-sized in terms of numbers.
Do all the kids take French?
Excuse me?
Do all the kids take French?
Everyone that, it's a requirement of the trip, so they have to be enrolled. They do miss a day or two of school.
Well, still.
So where they're immersed in French.
They don't like it if you don't speak French.
They still have to do all their other homework. They get a break from me for homework.
Got it, good.
Paris, vous voulez? Je n'ai pas peur de vous.
Here we go.
I'm just surprised there was no helicopter question from Tom. I've been sitting here waiting for it for two weeks.
Well, it's Canada, so we assume that they're not going to need a helicopter to get.
Don't assume anything.
So, well, thank you for coming. If there's no other questions.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. And we'll be sure to report back.
Make, a lot of pictures, yeah, please.
You drag the students in to give a presentation on it.
And speak.
Yeah, we love that.
And speak. From the city. Okay, on to the transportation, update with Mrs. Hackett?
Yeah, I'm going to turn this over to Mrs. Hackett.
Thank you, not too much to report, just Friday and today. And tomorrow are the student count days for students, so we'll have those numbers for us for the next school committee meeting. But cooperation continues and we've had some great success in our PPS department with getting kiddos onto big yellow buses off of vans and more kiddos being transported out of district on our own vans rather than contracting out. Additionally, we were able to file with ESA ESSA with DESI this past week for reimbursement for our foster transportation students. And we'll get 25% of our fourth quarter reimbursement, which is only about $5,000, but it makes us eligible for 25% of this entire year, of the current fiscal year. For FY, 21, FY 20, so that's exciting. And it's a transitional time right now for us in the office, as you know, with Mrs. Penny moving over to the high school and us working through transportation. So we appreciate her and Dr. Harrison's commitment to having Patty still help out in our office as we transition to somebody new taking on those responsibilities. So it's an exciting time to learn some new stuff.
Do we, how many out of district transportation needs do we have requirements?
Oh, now?
Yeah.
You forecast?
I believe we're down to transporting eight and that's from 19.
Okay, really good.
It really blew up last year at the end of the year.
It can go up and down. It can go up and down.
And we're still transporting them, but we're transporting them.
Using our own.
Using our own vans as opposed to contracting out and.
Fraction of the cost.
Yeah, how about next year? What's the forecast for next year, do you know?
To hold steady right now, right now, we're at four homeless, two, four homeless, two foster and 18 out of district that are being transported, but again, only a handful.
Is it short distance transportation or?
No, some are long distance. Yeah, we're transporting to Fall River, so.
Plymouth. Yeah, it's expensive, okay.
Yep.
$250,000, expensive.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
Is what we pay for, our out-of-district budget for transportation is $250,000 and that's not including salaries, which is another $252,000 for the PPS drivers that drive the vans, plus the cost of the leases which have on the agenda later tonight, so.
Yeah, okay. But we are starting to get, we're going to start to recoup some of that now with the change in the law, which is good, it'll be helpful.
And I think that team that is working in the office sort of has their hands on it more to have us better prepared for it.
Absolutely.
And I was at Masbowl last week and had a very brief conversation with Jay Sullivan regarding our claiming under the new circuit breaker program and using Rockland as a model, is we do not want to be penalized because we've saved money in out-of-district transportation costs. We want to fight to make sure that the $252,000 we're paying in salaries to transport kiddos is also included as a piece of the circuit breaker reimbursement program. So I'm going to be working with them on some test modeling for how best for districts to report.
I wouldn't have understood that, so I'm going to translate really quick. What she, what, what Jane has done.
I think I'm starting to talk to Jane, I think I'm glad I got.
Jane is done, I don't mean to insult Jane, I just want you to understand.
I got it.
I just want you to know how sharp she is. She is after them not only for the cost of the vehicles, but she's after the cost of the salaries that we're paying for reimbursement. And the people at the state are like, who is this person? Well, she's ours.
You can't.
That's who she is.
When you're talking about salaries, not only salaries, the full, it doesn't include benefits, does it?
Right, we want it.
Yeah, whatever the personnel cost.
That's right.
Yes, I don't want to be penalized because.
We don't want to be penalized because we're saving them money.
That's interesting, because that could get lost in the shuffle.
Absolutely.
For sure.
No doubt about it.
It's a lot of money.
But with Jane.
Not with Jane here.
A penny doesn't even get lost.
No, we're not losing any.
And what, she was the number one?
The first person, right?
To go for the reimbursement.
That's right. They said we were one of the first towns to file with them while getting our Medicaid.
Do my taxes?
Set spike, sir.
Set right up.
That's right, you know it. Yep.
You know, it's a very good team. PPS has been exceptionally cooperative in getting this data done. Mrs. Penny and Linda Richirelli and PPS worked very hard in getting these kiddos shifted around to the squeaker. They did a lot of good work.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to completed fundraisers. Middle School PAC had a Chipotle dining night. They earned two hundred and sixty-six dollars and twenty-three cents. The Service Learning Club did a Savers fund drive. They earned one thousand six hundred and sixty-one dollars. I missed going to Chipotle. That was the school committee night, but I did get to, did you? I did get to do the Savers and we came up with our truckload, but there were nineteen cars that convoyed over to Savers. And they turned in sixty-six hundred pounds of things, of soft goods.
I know. I couldn't believe it. I saw it on Twitter.
So we went from being the town that loves Chipotle to the town that loves to get rid of stuff from Chipotle.
Correct.
Because it's Chipotle.
I did my spring cleaning in the winter since we're not out shoveling and sort of playing in the snow. So it seems like a lot of people are on the same page as me. You're working out, I'm cleaning. So I thought that was impressive. Nineteen cars and sixty-six hundred pounds of soft goods. Right? Awesome. On to new business, first student activity.
Oh, that is me. The student activity accounts are required by DESI to be audited by an outside vendor every three years. Last year, we did that with Richard Swanson, Certified CPA, completed our audit. And right now, we're also in the transition of, this is the first year the secretary at the middle school is doing it. She took it over and we're transitioning currently in the high school to Mrs. O'Brien. And so rather than going out and spending money for an external audit, we're attempting to, we are following the guidelines which allow for an internal review. And there's a list of folks who would be eligible on an internal basis and have requested Biz, the town accountant, to be the person to go through and review our student activity accounts. And she's speaking with Mr. Lapp just about her availability of whether or not she has enough time to delve into it. DESI does comply, have a checklist for her to conduct and to compare our work versus the audit versus our policies and procedures. In addition, we're also taking advantage of a class opportunity in June and both the high school and the middle school secretaries are going to be going to training on student activities, which I think will be very beneficial. There are new guidelines coming out, Gatsby fifty-eight, which are new accounting standards that are going to impact student activities. And this class will cover those new reporting requirements.
Who's having the classes?
His name is Mark Abrams.
Okay, is he from the state?
Um, no, he works extensively in.
He does a lot of these.
He does a lot of these. I've been, I've been to them for fifteen, twenty years. I've gone to his classes on chapter seventy, end of the year reports, you name it, municipal or school financing. He is the guru, so to speak. And he holds the classes at the, to the Neiman Newton Administration Building.
Do you recommend that for any members of the school committee to attend?
The student activities?
Oh, any of these. Because we see all these reports all the time. I look at them all, yeah.
You're more than welcome to. I think it's designed for the people who actually have to do the reporting.
That's right.
You're more than welcome to, to attend. It's a particularly important time to do it because Ms. Ellis is leaving us and she's handled the high school student activity account, which is bigger than all of the other student activity accounts combined. So, and it's also a very, very sensitive area. It's a very sensitive financial area. When people get themselves in trouble, particularly high school principals, because they're sort of on the hook for this. It's a mismanagement of student activity funds because there's cash involved. So we run a very, very tight ship with, with Town Hall on this. We're very careful about making sure that everything is being done procedurally correct. And again, we did, we were audited last year, did an outside audit, which was good. But we're in a transition period, so I think it's a good time for retraining.
And the middle school is just transitioning too, so I think it's good to scoop them off, you know? Start on a fresh.
If you'd like to, Tom, if you'd like to.
Yeah, no, I'm just curious, you know, about that. I read those, I'm reading regular.
No, I know you like, you like that stuff. It's good.
Just crazy stuff.
Okay, on to the request for approval of the town meeting articles. That's back to you.
Do you want me to read them quickly?
Oh, it's up to you.
I can, I can read them quickly.
Okay.
There's a new one, right? A new one, right?
Do you have it now?
Yes. Okay, will the town vote? So there are, there are four. And just to preface this, we have cut back substantially, I think Jane has exact numbers. We've cut back from last year as what we're asking the town for in articles because of the boost in chapter seventy. We're trying to share some of that windfall, so to speak, with town. So we're not asking for as many things as we have in the past. But the first one, will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds the sum of one hundred thousand dollars to fund and replace, the replacement and upgrading of computers and any technology-related expenses or take any action relative thereto? Number two, will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds the sum of eleven thousand twenty-six dollars to fund twelve months of a five-year lease purchase agreement for a two thousand seventeen F-350 dump plow truck or take any action relative thereto? Number three, will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds the sum of seven thousand seven hundred and five dollars to fund twelve months of a five-year lease purchase agreement for a two thousand sixteen fifteen-passenger multifunction school activity bus or take any action relative thereto? And number four, will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds the sum of seventy thousand sixteen dollars to fund the final five months of a five-year combined lease purchase agreement for two F, two two thousand fifteen Ford Transit Special Education vans and twelve months of a five-year combined lease purchase for four two thousand sixteen Ford Transit Special Education vans and twelve months of a five-year combined lease purchase agreement for a one two thousand seventeen Ford Transit wheelchair accessible special education van and one two thousand seventeen Ford Transit Special Education van and seven months of a new lease purchase agreement of up to five years for two special education vans or take any action relative thereto? Those are the four town articles that we are putting forward this year. Four motions.
Four motions.
Four seconds.
Any discussion?
The, the, the first one is our computers. That seems like, that's a rotating? You're rotating your new updates.
That's a result of, and I think wisely so, the finance committee, back when we were looking desperately for money for technology. They didn't want to get it mixed into our regular budget and, and used in some other way. So they, they spelled it out as to how they want it spent, and I think it's, I think it's a big thing.
And we, I know we have a plan.
Yes. Yes. Every year, we bring Tim with us to the finance committee. And he gives it, an explanation, exactly shows them on a spreadsheet how we spent a hundred thousand dollars. And I think we've developed a very good relationship with the finance committee. That kind of transparency, they really appreciate.
That must be an interesting discussion with them.
Yeah.
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday night, we'll be there.
Next Thursday, yeah, at Capital.
Capital planning.
Yeah, we're going to Capital Planning. We'll let you know if you want to come.
Yeah, would you?
Absolutely.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, absolutely. It's always nice to have any of you there at any of those presentations.
Yeah, give us a schedule then, so.
Was there anything that I missed on that?
Did you want the dollar amounts comparative to last year?
Um, I don't think you want the dollar amounts compared to last year.
No, she gave them to us.
And this is the least, the actual lease schedule?
Right.
Justin, do we have to be careful if we go to one of these meetings and there are three of us? Do we have to?
Well, it's a posted meeting.
Yeah, for, so about one of, is that supposed to?
Right, if more than two of you are going to go, then we would want to post that.
I can tell you I won't be there because I have to go to my next meeting.
Okay.
Well, I'll let you know.
Okay, yeah, so I'll let everyone know.
Give us dates and we can figure it out.
Yeah, we'll see, okay.
I don't know what my next birthday is either.
That's a good point, Dick. Thank you.
No, so we were discussing and we got a motion in a second, so we're good? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay.
I have a quick question, not on the adequate final. When the leases are up, are we gonna, are we leasing these as if we're going to take ownership at the end?
No, we're not. No. There are two that are up in this November thirtieth this year, and we're going to start in July or August to go out to bid for two new vehicles. The one, the activity bus, we probably will purchase. There's a twenty-two thousand five hundred dollar payment that's due in July of twenty-one. That one we'll probably, we'll look at, but the wear and tear on the seventies and what's new and what needs to do. And frankly, they haven't been particularly pleased with this, with this group of vehicles. We've had some, we've had a lot of maintenance on these that were outside of the warranty. And I think we're going to go yellow, back to yellow buses from white. White was in vogue and the right thing to do at the time. And now white vans become extremely common for smaller delivery companies. And so there's a shift back towards getting the yellow vans to help them stand out for safety purposes.
I was going to say, I think it's safer. It will confuse us talking about them, but I do think it's safer. I think the white ones do sort of blend in more on the streets.
Can you talk with the drivers at all before you go out to bid on these things, where I'm coming from this? I know the last time we leased three or four, there was a problem the drivers had with getting kids kind of on hands-on to guide them out. There was something in the way, as I remember.
Right, and so the next time they went out, I forget the name of the driver, but Mrs. Forlisi took somebody with her.
Okay.
Took one of the drivers with, the ones that we got, and I believe it was two thousand and eighteen. The two thousand eighteen van, she took a driver with her and we removed one seat.
Maybe that was it.
Yeah, and we took the front seat out, moved the back so that way they can shift and have enough room to assist the kiddos.
Okay, because I mean, the drivers are the ones that, they, they know what it's all about.
Okay. On to the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one school calendar. This is a first reading.
It's a first reading. It has teachers reporting on the thirty-first of August and, and the first of September for teacher orientation and staff development. It has the first day for students as the second of September. Just very briefly, this is a later start than we would like. I guarantee you that my colleagues in other districts are having the same dilemma with how to set up their calendar simply because the state election is being held this year on the first of September. And it's kind of messed everything up. Normally, it was on the fifteenth, so we would have had, say, teachers back Monday, Tuesday. Then we would have had, we would, may have started a week earlier. But we looked at all the different possibilities, talked to the union about it. We actually had to do a sidebar arrangement to be able to change the starting dates because the, the contract spells out exactly what days, we have those in the contract. So we've worked that out with the union and we have an MOA together on that to change the dates. So these are the dates that we're recommending for the twenty, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school calendar. I don't know if you have any questions.
But then a short summer next year because they get out later.
They'll get out a little later, yeah.
Twenty-first, ten of the.
Why is the fourth highlighted in September?
Why is the fourth highlighted?
It's the Friday before Labor Day. It's tradition.
So we don't have school that day?
That's just not on the list.
But it's not listed here, yeah. We should probably put that in, Mrs. Lamb.
But I will tell you, a lot of people hate it started on Monday. Hated starting on that Monday before Labor Day.
I hear you.
You mean, kids, families?
Well, so, think about if you, depending on what you do for work, your only week of vacation ends up being the last week of August. You come home on Sunday and you start school on Monday.
Right.
And I know that from multiple, I've experienced it, friends have experienced it, multiple people. That Monday was always a tough day. We used to sit there and be like, let's go back to Tuesday.
I think it will be a fun summer. I love the kids home. The longer the summer, the better for me.
Plus, Labor Day is late.
Right, this whole September sort of was not a good September. But next summer, we'll all be kicking ourselves because then you're going to swing into that they're hot and they're in school and duh-duh.
And no snow day.
So we will post, we will post this on the website so that the public, if they has, you know, they have any comments or questions can reach out to you or obviously reach out to me. People have ideas. But a tremendous amount of thought goes into picking this, this calendar. There are fifteen different ways to do it, but we feel that this is the best way for Rockland. So it's our, this is our recommendation at this point.
Okay. So we'll vote to waive the first. This is your first reading? Yeah, we want to have the first reading and we'll come back, so we're table.
Right.
All those in favor? Mike, were you in favor?
I don't know, because I'm sick of people asking me when the first day of school is, and I'm sure you guys are. So that's why I'm.
You're still at the table.
Struggling with it.
We'll come up with any other ideas.
Right, I think it's fair to put it out there and see if.
Can I ask a devil's advocate question?
Uh-oh, yep.
Okay? We put it out there for a reading. Joe Smith has a complaint about it. Can't do anything about it. It's a hundred and eighty days that we have to do.
Right.
But at least be able to have a conversation with Joe.
But at least they'll have.
There's not much we can do with what we're given.
If there's fifty Joe Smiths, then maybe, you know, then we, we look at it tough again.
Or they may come up with an idea that we haven't thought of.
Right, let them do that.
I kind of don't think it's that complicated, so I don't think there's too many ideas people could come up with, but.
Yeah, I mean, we get, the election's a killer.
Yeah, it just messed, that just messed everything up, you know? But that's okay. That's all right.
And you don't, you don't have much.
It's a nice, long summer for the kids and for the teachers.
And you don't have much room either, at either end.
No.
You look at it, at the last day of school with five snow days, it's the twenty-eighth.
Yeah, it's crazy.
It gives you two days.
Yep.
You know, I mean, the thirtieth is the last. You can't stop, you know?
We've had years like that.
Yep, oh, yeah. You know, instead of getting some, you know, you know, if you have, if you have a lot of snow days, like we don't have any this year. Knock on wood. You know, is that you start taking vacation away.
Yeah.
So it's, it's a difficult calendar.
Something to be said about that.
Well, that's what I like, yeah, okay.
So let's go back.
Motion to table.
Motion to table.
All those in favor? Thank you. Okay, so we have on the request for approval fundraisers, but that's not, we didn't have any.
There are no fundraisers.
Skip that. Request for approval of two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one program of studies. It's the first reading.
And Dr. Harrison is here.
I forget the wrong name. Get Mr. Harrison's name.
I can't believe he's not at the basketball game.
I know. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me here tonight to present the program of studies changes. A lot of work goes into this. I want to thank the teachers, the department heads in particular, for their proposals and the site council because they voted on this, I believe, last week or the week before, these changes as well. So they were all very supportive. Just to kind of provide an overview of the changes, the science department is recommending two new courses, two electives that are semester courses, networking and hardware in software systems. What they try to do, what Ms. Armstrong, the department chair, is trying to do is rotate. So these two are two new electives, and the goal is if a kid can take four electives, they're in good shape to get their A-plus certification. So that was the idea behind that, of rotating them. It's a lot more work for Ms. Armstrong who's teaching the course, but she feels it's worth it. The history and science, social science department is adding an elective called Activism in Civic Engagement. This would be for juniors and seniors. This elective is a pilot as a result of a law that Governor Baker passed in two thousand eighteen for schools to incorporate a civics project in grade eight in a high school year. So Mr. McAllister, the department chair, is proposing that we pilot it with juniors and seniors voluntarily. And then the following year, try to figure out how are we going to make it a requirement within our program of studies. So the goal is to increase the capacity of our students to be civic-minded. So they'll each be responsible for some sort of authentic learning project. For world language, students in middle school and grade eight, they take four core classes. In the high school, they take five core classes because usually we start them with the world language. What we've found, though, is students who tend to struggle at the middle school in grade eight who have a significant number of course failures. Adding in a core class doesn't make a lot of sense when world language is a two-year requirement. So you don't have to take Spanish or French freshman year. So what we're proposing is students with two or more failing grades in grade eight in their core academic classes that they hold off on taking a world language until their sophomore year because we just don't want to see them have five failures and cannot struggle. So if a parent wanted to override it, they could, but we want families to know what our recommendation is. And the last change on the back page is just talking about, this is not new. This is called the Advanced Placement Course Commitment Language. This is something we've previously just given students and parents in September when students come in on the first day of school. What we found is we probably should include in our program of studies so families can see it prior to enrolling in the course. Hopefully, that'll limit the number of course changes. So we're proposing that. This, just to summarize it, talks about what happens if you decide you don't want to take the AP course, the withdrawal process, and what's denoted on your transcript, which is honors instead of advanced placement if you don't take the AP exam in May. And that's nothing new. We've been following that practice for quite some time. And then the payment and when the payment is due. So those are the changes. Nothing major this year, but we're looking forward to it.
First reading?
First reading.
Motion.
First reading.
Can I just say one thing?
You certainly can.
If you, if you have a, if, if you had to look at one thing to sort of define a school, a high school, you'd look at their program of studies. This is as fine a program of studies as any high school, I'd say, in the country.
Really? Wow.
And.
Pretty detailed.
We are a small district. Small districts have trouble offering as wide a range of advanced placement courses as we're offering. Small districts have trouble offering as many different types of offerings as we, as we are. We're now getting into the research course. Dr. Harrison has taken us into environmental science and other areas. I just want to commend Dr. Harrison for taking what I think was a pretty good program of studies when you got here. And I think, and I think you've made it even better. So I'm very, very pleased with the direction, but this is an incredibly important document. This and the student handbook are really the two, two most important documents that any school district, any school has. I don't mean to understate the importance of the middle school program of studies or the. I don't mean to understate the importance of the middle school program of studies or the elementary program of studies, but we send this to colleges. This is what gets our kids into colleges or not. It's a very important document, and I think it's being done extremely well by Marky Black and by Dr. Harrison, and I just want to commend them for that.
Yeah, it's good, good reading. Very good reading.
I agree. I was impressed that there were so many choices in each thing. It wasn't, here's art, this is what you can.
Very thoughtful about it.
Piece has multiple choices to pick from.
The department heads are very thoughtful about it.
Right, so I was impressed. For sure. Any other comments, questions?
Just the other modifications, just the front page.
Yep.
Yep.
What, the name?
The name.
You're not spelled wrong, are you?
No.
Oh, I know.
Ms. Harrison.
I know, I caught that. Even I caught that.
Harrison, Davidson.
We'll fix that.
So motion to table?
You don't have a time. We're not up against the wall.
We planned for a second reading at the next meeting, so March 1st roll out.
Yeah.
All those in favor? Did you put your hand, Mike? I'm sorry. I was going around. I couldn't see your hand. My head bobbed.
I want to find out more about that networking curriculum I talked about.
Oh, yeah.
I saw that one.
You need to take a day off and come hang out with us, is what you need to do.
I'll do that.
You do. You should come hang out with Angie Armstrong for a day. You'd be fascinated.
Yeah, I really want to do that.
Yeah, I, I love, I do that. I love that stuff.
I know, I find it exciting and refreshing to go in. I already talked to Dr. Conroy, want to do it again. I went in last year and shadowed at the school. I think it's, it gives you sort of a different perspective from sitting here every day.
But just, you know, I, I look at it as a comparison, you know, what, you know, you're offering here, what we offer in Boston, and the various things. This networking, I was looking at networking courses, things they try to offer for next year. That's if I go back to work next year, I don't know. AP, the AP computer science course is interesting, the way they have that structure too.
We're getting as much bang for our bucks.
Right, and that's, we don't offer those in our school. You know, we have this one and, and a computer essentials course.
Every year, when the seniors or the recent graduates come back at Christmas, when we, we have our seniors come back right before the holidays to talk about what it's like to be a freshman in college, cannot tell you the number of students who say, I saved X amount of dollars because of my advanced placement coursework. I was able to take this course or that course because of my advanced placement coursework. So I, I give them, the students who are taking on that challenge, a lot of credit because it's a ton of work.
It is.
Ton of work. But at the same time, I'm glad that it's giving them, giving them benefits when they go away and they're ready for school.
It wasn't even an option 20 years ago. One or two classes. That was it.
But the other thing is to get them in the, up to speed in what's required and the amount of work for those type of courses.
Yeah.
They come back and they say, you know, we did as much or maybe more work than we did in some of the courses at, at college.
Oh, yeah, they're harder.
Yeah, they're harder. Some of those AP courses, particularly, you know, I mean, like, you know, the, the tests are earlier in the year than, you know, they start in April.
Oh, I know. We're giving, we're giving AP exams, and the kids have only been, you know, been in school a few months. And they start testing in late April or early May.
Yeah, and it just, it baffles them.
But our kids are accepting the challenge and doing really well with it. I'm really proud of them.
Yep, it is.
I never took an AP course in high school, so I'm very proud of them.
I can say the same thing. Not my cup of tea either. I think as an eighth-grade parent, this year to sort of look at that was a bit eye-opening. Like, he sets it up, Dr. Harrison sets it up, so he's basically saying this, you're gonna pick one of these, you're gonna do this, right? So I didn't feel sort of bewildered, like, what am I doing now? What are we, you know? So I liked that. That was.
Of how the colleges do it.
Yes.
Right, exactly.
You have a concentration of what you want to do.
Right, and then you're gonna steer, right.
You know, and seeing, talking about the AP, I have a daughter who wants to be a marine biologist. She's gonna be all over as a freshman, wanting to get into an AP bio. So she can go from freshman and then do other stuff. And to think that a freshman has a shot at an AP class?
Right.
You should be.
How many other districts are doing that? Can't think too many. I know one young man, Ronan McNally, scored a five on the AP exam as a freshman in AP bio.
Not bad.
Scored a five, so it's doable. Freshman scoring a five. And now, he's not your typical young man.
No, no, he wasn't.
But still, it's possible.
Right.
He did it.
As I recall, you were one of the four ones pushing this and getting a building, the whole thrust of getting kids more involved.
And I believe in it, not just for the advanced placement student. I, I want to say this, I don't believe in it just for the top 10, 15, 20% of the kids. I believe, wholeheartedly, it makes the rest of the curriculum more rich. It, it filters down through everything that happens in the math department. AP calculus may only have 15 students, but that rigor carries through every course that that teacher teaches, and it makes a big difference.
That's, that's the, that's the key to the AP courses too, is the scope and sequence that they have to, and they start, if they start in the freshman year, hey, this is a lot of work, yeah, but this is what you, you need to know to get there. Because you don't want to be, okay, all these nice courses, and I get to college.
Not to scare you.
She's gonna do wonderfully.
She's gonna kill it.
That's like John Eller, who graduated last year, had enough AP credits, so he's like technically a freshman, but like class-wise, he's a sophomore.
Get the credit. And, and there is an expense to that.
There's an expense to that. He's saving money, absolutely.
In time.
In time.
How many?
Two. I take AP microeconomics and AP statistics.
That's good.
I can see why you only took two.
Yeah. I took three last year, and I could do it, but I'm like.
What did you take last year?
I took AP US history, AP seminar, which is the precursor to AP research, and also AP Lang, which is English.
Yeah, two is probably a good number.
Two's a good number.
Especially with everything else that you want to do.
But I like how it's set up, so you knew, take this, so then I can take that too, right? I think that shows that he has his game on, getting the soup to nuts and all.
Yep.
Right? Which is what I think he has mastered. Okay, on to request for approval of the 20, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't cross it off. Okay. Public service announcements. We're at the end of our day here. Mrs. Gear, listen.
Mrs. Gear's over there.
Miss Gear.
Student government is very excited because we are, will also be, whoa, celebrating Kindness Day on Friday, so we have a couple of fun things up our sleeve to just spread some kindness around the school, which is awesome. The official countdown is 60 days. The senior class voted on caps and gowns. We had an assembly. Some questions were raised, and even the question of what color, if we could wear all white. So we were able to vote, so we voted for the color, whether we wanted two colors or one on our gown, and then what the design would be. We ended up going with the first design, which is all navy blue with two white stripes. That was personally my favorite, so big win.
That was my favorite, yeah.
Yeah, and for the moment you all have been waiting for, I know where I'm going to call it.
Where are you going?
I have committed to UMass Lowell to study business administration.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Great job.
Very good. We're proud of you.
Thank you.
Riverhawks. He's a Riverhawk.
Good, good group, good group of school. Very good up there.
That all? I mean, that was a lot. I didn't want to cut you off if you had more. Ms. Davidson, Ms. Harrison.
Congratulations.
I just want to say that this Thursday, there's a subcommittee for the school building project for the interior and exterior design. So we're starting to get working on that. And I wish everyone has a nice school vacation, and have fun, and stay safe.
Happy Valentine's Day, too.
And happy Valentine's.
Public services. I, I received a letter. I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but if, I, I enjoy reading from people in the town if they have any issues with the school, department, the school committee, or anything like that. But do me a favor, sign it. Give me a telephone number. Give me an address to talk to you. I'd be more than happy to talk to you about it. So if you want to send me another one with the, with your information, I'd be more than happy to get back to you.
I agree. I think all of us sort of feel the same way. If you want to sort of question us or approach us for anything that we're doing, or you're hearing, or whatnot, we're here, we're available, we're elected officials, and we answer. That's what we're here for. So I agree with Mr. Nelson.
Then I'll sign it, I don't read it.
No. I think that we certainly make ourselves available. He has the same one.
He's got the same one, right.
I didn't get it, but last year, Tom and I got the same letter.
I didn't, I didn't get it this year, I'm disappointed.
Maybe they know that you won't read it and then want to waste the time.
Right, they weren't gonna sign it, so they weren't going to.
And then I, I kind of filed it away, and I find it, well, let me talk about this.
Go ahead, Mr. Phelps.
I have nothing.
Nothing. With all the sports and everything going on, you've got nothing.
I don't even want to talk about, everyone is doing so well, all the thousand-point, it's just, it's phenomenal. This class is, it's got class.
They do have class.
They've got class. It's, not that the others don't, but I'll tell you, our kids are just magnificent this year in, in all the sports. I don't know how wrestling's doing. I'm not sure about wrestling.
I think they're having a good year, right? Every time, every time I look, they're winning meets.
Is it wrestling or rassling?
Rassling.
All right. No, that's all I've got.
That's all you've got.
Well, yeah, I mean, between that and, or they're on basketball, right?
Not the basketball kids.
No. I don't know. Dante's the type of kid, if you put him in wrestling, he'd be a New England champ. First time ever doing it, so, you know? I actually think it's great that we had a year where we had a girls' thousand-point scorer and a boys' thousand-point scorer. It's nice to see it on both sides and not be one-sided or the other. You know, other than that, I'm with Tom on the letter. We're all approachable. We all have, most of us have Facebook. We have emails. We have phones. You can find us if you want us. You know where we live to send the letters. Reach out. We're not gonna call you out for talking to us. Aside from that, I think it's great that Kindness Day is coming up. I really think it's great that you guys are in on it. The Memorial Park will be happy to hear that. The one through four kids will love that. And everybody have a happy and safe vacation.
Okay.
Good timing.
I'm thrilled for Vacation Week. Valentine's Day is Friday. Half Day, Thursday. I have my bracelet on for my MP Random Acts of Kindness Friday. Hashtag, or as I call it, pound, and my children will correct me. Kindness, hashtag kindness, Rockland 2020. I say pound, and they're like, what are you talking about? Anyways, and I had in my thing that we had chosen, or you, I didn't say we, had chosen your gown, so I think we've all covered everything, and I think we're good for a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? Have a good night.
Happy Valentine's.